Notice is hereby given of a Friendswood City Council regular meeting to be held at 5:00 PM on Monday, December 2nd, 2019, at Friendswood City Hall, Council Chambers, 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas regarding the items of business according to the agenda listed below. I'll call this meeting to order. We're going to have an invocation here in a second, and then two Trail Life scouts are going to come up and say the pledge with us. So if everybody will stand, and I'll introduce Rabbi Yitzhie Smutler, the Habad of the Bay Area, to give our invocation, and then it's going to be Joshua and Jacob who are going to lead us in our pledges, so.
Thank you for the invitation. Almighty God, we stand before you in prayer. The first human, Adam, was created individually, solitary, and alone to teach us the power of just one person, that no one is just a number, a statistic, or merely a vote, that each individual matters, and that each of us, created in God's image, has the ability and obligation to help make our world a better place. Almighty God, as we reflect upon this thought, bless us that we be mindful of our actions toward our fellow men, that they may be done with kindness, fairness, and for good. Almighty God, bless the Honorable Mayor and this esteemed council and their staff to be successful in their endeavors, in their efforts to govern this city justly and fairly, and bless this wonderful city of Friendswood so that it continue to prosper and grow as a model community within our great state and our beloved country. And let us say amen.
Amen. Thank you, Rabbi.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thanks, guys. Okay, down to item four, communications from the public. To comply with the provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the City Council may not deliberate on items discussed under this agenda item. The council may refer this item to the City Manager or direct this item to be placed on the next regular council agenda. Out of respect for those speaking during public comment, please refrain from any outbursts or interjections to include but not limited to applause and/or disparaging noises from the audience. Doing so discourages others from voicing their thoughts and opinions and disrupts the meeting. Furthermore, any personnel complaints against a city employee, aside from the City Manager, City Secretary, City Attorney, or Municipal Judge cannot be discussed under this section. Please contact the City Manager's office for concerns involving a city employee. Dwayne Ruiz.
Hello, Dwayne. Before you get started, I'm the clockkeeper, and so you have three minutes to speak, and when you get to two, I'll raise this, and then when your time is up, I'll raise that. So just begin whenever you're ready.
All right. This is a pretty straightforward request. First of all, there's, I just learned there's an error on my little document I made up today. The light that's planned is actually planned at Leisure Lane, not at the intersection of Chara in where God is common. So that's an error. But what we're asking, what I'm asking, is that the council would be kind enough to consider an ordinance that would limit and not allow parking along Leisure Lane, because we're seeing a lot of right-hand turns to bypass the intersection at 518 and 528 so that they end up at Winding Way and 528. It's going to happen, but what we'd like to do is limit the parking. We're already seeing, you'll see some pictures there, we're already seeing people starting to park just because of the homes that are being built there, and it's creating really a one-lane, one-lane street at best, and sometimes we have to wait for each other. We're also concerned that with the activity now ongoing at the Regatta Commons, that people will begin to park along Leisure Lane to access the backside of Regatta Commons. I walk to it, it's easy to get to, and that parking right there will really create a issue from our perspective in our neighborhood. I think it would create an issue with access egress by emergency vehicles and anyone. People are going to go down it to get to bypass that intersection. It just is what it is. We think it would help if we could create an ordinance or something and make that a no parking and a tollway zone. No yellow card? Thank you very much for that consideration.
Thanks, Dwayne.
Thank you, guys, for your service, too.
Okay, item five, work session. First item is discussion of our comprehensive plan. Rod, you want to interrupt me?
Yes, do you mind, and I apologize, Aubrey, if we move Scott Gordon's comments up real quick?
Thank you very much. Yes, yes.
Sorry.
If I don't have it written down.
So if Mayor and Council will want to suspend the rules and move that item up, it'd be appreciated. It would be item.
Yes, I'm sure you'll allow me to move item 8B to the, under special recognition and acknowledgements, presentation of a donation check from Scott Gordon and family to the City of Friendswood in honor of Cole Gordon. Scott, Heather, I can't be quiet about this. You know, our hearts are broken. We're all parents sitting up here. We all can't even imagine what you all are going through, but please know that we're thinking about you all the time.
Us, our family are blessed to live in this town. I know you all put up with a lot of negative items and a lot of things you don't want to hear in this town, but let me refresh you with something that's very positive. Anywhere else that I've been or around here would not have the compassion that this city has had on, not only us, but Cole. Talks with the mayor, lower the flags, to the planting of the tree, to the light that they're going to put on it, and one of the first calls after something happened since Cole was so tight with all the group, all the council, and everybody knew him personally, was I called Tony and James, and I said, hey, I said, what does the city need? Where are we at? I said, we want to do something for Cole, since he was, helped everybody in this room at some point or another with something, as well as the Parks Department helping on the Christmas parade and the Fourth of July. So when the point of the lights came up, that they've always been white, and in our opinion, I think it was a perfect fit, now that we can change them to honor the holidays and honor the things and the breast cancer awareness and other things if we need to in the event of another untimely problem. It was a perfect match for us to donate the funds to pay back. I know it was in the budget, but let's reimburse the city for that, for all the lights that were put in. I know there's a bench that's being put in, and as we do additional lightings or changing of lights, it's an agreement that we will talk with, everybody will talk with me on it. And there's not words, but there's a lot of love and compassion in this town, and we've been here from day one, and we just want you all to know we are moving forward with some other projects in town, and I will be getting with some of you all on some things for Cole and in honor of Cole, and continue with everything we do in Friendswood and for Friendswood. So with that, we have a check to cover all your expenses on the lights. And a token of appreciation from the Gordons, this was not from his memorial fund, this was from Heather and Scott Gordon. His funds will stay, his funds, we have a project for them.
Mayor.
Scott. Appreciate it so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Guys, thank you all. Thank you all for helping us tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you all for helping us tonight. Thank you. 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 Thank you.[791.16]
Determine which ones are a priority to tackle first. And then you might know which ones you need to bring in outside help for, or maybe nothing needs to be changed in them, they just need to be updated or edited. But there have been so many different things, and I just think that an organization, be it a city, a business, anything, just runs more smoothly when everybody knows where they're going and what the goals are in the direction. And since we've had so many changes at the city, I don't think it's something that is hurting our city right now. We're not in trouble, we're not a city in trouble, we're not a city that's stagnant, or, you know, we don't have any big, huge issues. But the $41 million bond that we just passed, it's a huge commitment towards Clear Creek. That should be in our comprehensive plan somewhere, you know, and how we're going to address that and tackle that, besides the other, in addition, or in addition to the other areas of the bond. So I just think it's great timing to do this. I do think they're needed. I think it's also important for our volunteers who serve on other committees like P&amp;Z or CEDC. I'm still talking 80/20, and I don't even know if anybody else is talking 80/20. So I think it's important when the people who are serving on those volunteer committees are working and understanding the same thing that council understands and that staff understands. So I applaud you for bringing this, I'm very excited about it.
Yeah, I wanted to echo what Councilwoman Hank said, if we could workshop it, and maybe we could include planning and zoning in those workshops, I think, just so that we all have a good basis of it. And I had a second, I had a question. Do we, or have we, or maybe it's included in here, do we ever look at the environmental impacts of our city in these comprehensive plans?
There is, we have a master drainage plan, but other than that, I don't, I'm not aware of any.
So, our plan historically has not had an environmental or sustainability component to it. There are, there is a master drainage plan that takes into account some of the more problematic areas of the city, but it's not a citywide comprehensive analysis similar to what we did with the subcommittee, the drainage subcommittee. We can add an environmental component if that's the desire of council, that's something that we would not be able to do in-house. We don't have environmental capabilities with regard to our professional staff, but that's definitely something that can be looked at.
And that was, it is a desire of at least one of our subcommittee members really wants to do that, and she emailed me some samples of, I believe Mary Queen Catholic Church has a sustainability plan, and she emailed me one other one, so that has been discussed as well.
You're talking about the subcommittee, P&amp;Z?
Mm-hmm.
Well, keep friends with beautiful.
Okay.
P&amp;Z is discussing it.
Yes.
I completely agree with Trish. I think this is a great idea. I'd like to know how much of this comprehensive plan can be done in-house, and how much do you think would have to go out to get outside council on? I know that there are, in addition to having P&amp;Z with us, and some infrastructure on roads and that sort of thing needs to be addressed in this comprehensive plan too. So how much can we do in-house versus going to outside council?
I think we could update everything that we have, we can update it. As far as visioning and coming up with new objectives, I think it would just be fresh to have an outside people who do this on an everyday basis for other cities and have that, and, you know, sometimes I think we get, we're in the box, and it's hard to look outside that box. So, you know, having fresh eyes for visioning and things like that would be.
Well, the current zoning map that I was provided is quite a bit different from one in here, but y'all are keeping that updated pretty regularly that I could tell.
Yeah, so the future land use map is the one that's in this presentation, so that's a completely different document from the official zoning map. So they're not the same thing. The official zoning map is what's on the ground, and we're about, you have to update, so we track changes that are made, and then at a certain time, we update and adopt a new map. And that's actually about to come before you in January, we're going to adopt a new official zoning map. But the future land use map is some, it's just a map that we get public input on, and we adopt that map as a guide. So we should look at that map when we make zone changes and make sure it complies with that.
Oh, I completely agree with Trish. I think if we could workshop some of that, that would be great, just for better understanding for people who've only been here a year.
Sure.
If I may, I know it's no secret, since I've been on P&amp;Z, I've been asking for this, because I too went to one of those conferences, and I was like, yes, we need to do this. I do have a little bit of concern about how much you can do in-house, you know, it takes a lot of time, effort, energy, so I would just want to be mindful of, I know y'all have your regular job to do as well. And the other thing, the visioning is real important, I think, because this was done back in the 90s, and it was 2020. Guess what next year is? 2020. So, much like Lauren Griffith and Associates came in and helped us with the downtown plan, I think that they did a great job of reaching out to our community and trying to get who wanted to be heard, heard. So I think it'd be very, very important that we do, not just hear from the usual folks, but anyone and everyone who's interested in this, to give them the opportunity to have a say. So thank you all for taking this on, I'm so excited, I can't tell you how excited I am. Thank you.
I think it's great. Mo, what would you think about, maybe we propose a, you know, our next council retreat, which we typically have had in February timeframe, be a joint meeting with council and planning and zoning, and obviously open to the public, but with this being the major topic of discussion for that, for that retreat?
That's perfectly, that's okay with me, so we'll get that scheduled.
Does that schedule hinder you from doing what you're proposing that you start doing now?
Aubrey can't celebrate Christmas because of it, but other than that, we should be fine.
It would actually be great timing, Planning and Zoning's having our annual retreat two weeks from tonight, so we can put that on our to-do list for next year. We review the permitted use table come in January, so timing-wise, that would work.
So you guys will be sharpening your knives, getting ready for the meeting with us, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
No, it's all good. Joe's looking at me like, ooh. Well, I think we're all probably in strong agreement that it's good to have a comprehensive plan, and, oh by the way, maybe update it once in a while, and, yeah, so obviously, I think we're going to be in support of this, and I agree with you that probably some outside help would help eventually, not to get to, you know, our basic plan back up to snuff, but sort of with that visioning part of it, that, you know, there are smarter people out there that do this every day for other cities.
And one helpful thing I did read in state laws that it allows, but I think it would be a good trigger in the future, you're, so we have to review the land use, our land use assumptions every five years in relation to how we charge impact fees, and so we do population updates, and so I think that's a good trigger to review both the comp plan and, you know, those land use assumptions kind of at the same time. So every five years, we would have that timeframe to review those.
Sounds good. Anybody else have a comment? Thanks Aubrey.
All right, thank you.
Thanks Rod. One more item to discuss on our work session, police department, extra duty, off-duty, and special event jobs discussion.
Mayor and council, Police Chief Wieners and Deputy Chief Rogers are on their way up to talk about an item that we had talked about briefly at the last council meeting related to special events, as well as bringing y'all up to speed on some issues with regard to off-duty employment.
Chief, could I interrupt you, because I saw Hill and Samantha in the back, and we have not actually met Samantha. So, Hill, would you mind, as the city engineer, introducing your new deputy city engineer? Come on up, come on up, everybody, come on up, come on down.
I told her she wasn't going to have to come up to the podium, so.
Hey, you can stay back there in the, stay back there in the front row and.
But I'd like to introduce Samantha Herdows. She is our new deputy director of engineering. She comes with us, to us, we have lots of experience in hydraulics and hydrology, and I guess, if you want to say.
Sure.
Spent some time with the Corps of Engineers.
Army Corps of Engineers, yes, eight years.
I have 15 years of experience, oh, sure, I have 15 years of experience in drainage. I spent eight years down with the Corps in Galveston, that's kind of where I got my start. But I've lived in this area for the last 15 years, and I'm really excited to help everybody with drainage problems, because that's my passion, and this is where I live, so.
Thanks. Great to have you. Now, you don't have to stay for any more of the meeting, eh? But thank you for being here. Sorry, chief.
Hard act to follow, right there.
Not for you.
Oh, yeah. So let me allay any concerns before we get started. I'm not here to look for any money, and I'm not here to go ahead and present problems that don't have a very workable solution. But after James's presentation last week, I mean, there was a couple of other things that were already kind of brewing as background issues. And so as we go ahead and we enter into the discussion tonight, what I want you to keep in the back of your mind is that there is an issue with disability insurance for officers that are working off-duty jobs. And in addition to that, there are really some need for consensus as far as what the city expectations are for city employees to go ahead and work large events at city facilities. So with that in mind, the issue on workman's compensation all came as a result of a Webster police officer being hit about 12 months ago, working a football game at Dickinson High School. The job was approved by the chief of police, and the officer was doing what officers do when he, when he was hit directing traffic, but needless to say, at night, you know, it can happen, and TML did not cover the officer. They went ahead and essentially, you know, felt that the officer was operating as a independent contractor in that off-duty capacity, and that he was not going to be covered by workman's comp. So with that in mind, what Webster did is they decided to use an off-duty management company and add 20% to whatever their off-duty rate is. So hypothetically, you know, the off-duty rate here is $35 an hour, you know, Marine Mass says that 20% would be about seven, and we're looking at about $42 an hour, and that $7 an hour goes to the off-duty management company for, you know, sponsoring liability and disability insurance. So, research with TML, both by Bill Bender and then the assistant city manager, they met with TML. And essentially what TML has said is that, you know, if an officer is functioning at an off-duty job, and he has to assume his peace officer role due to a breach of the peace, you know, and you can, you know, come up with several scenarios, then that is when he's no longer in an off-duty status, he becomes an on-duty peace officer, and he would be covered by TML. However, so let's just use an example, if an officer is working, you know, at a, I'll say a football game, and there's a fight in the stands, and the officer goes into the stands to break up the fight, and he gets hurt, he's going to be covered by TML. If the officer is walking behind the stands, and he slips and falls, he's not going to be covered. And if the officer is hit directing traffic, he's not going to be covered. So there is an issue with workman's comp and liability insurance. So what I wanted to go ahead and do was give you that as general background, you know how to flip these forward? There you go. So, yeah, what's the next slide? So the real question is, extra duty versus off-duty versus city events? That's kind of what we talked about last month. So what we need to do is to differentiate what is an extra-duty job? An extra-duty job, just for the sake of simplicity, is somebody who's working at a bank, working at a private party, somebody who is working at a church, and there's probably about a half a dozen other examples that I could use. So that is something that the officer does on his own time, he volunteers to go ahead and take that job, and in that capacity, he's got no disability insurance. So what our intent is, in those circumstances, is to require the officer to get his own insurance. We've got a vendor, it's going to cost them about $28 a month, but if they're going to work extra jobs in the city at those events, they're going to have to buy insurance so that they have disability insurance. And, you know, the cost is probably about one hour's worth of an extra job event in order to be covered with workman's comp. The city of Houston provides that to the police officers as part of their contract, but I'm not advocating for that. I don't think that any extra-duty job or any extra-duty employment should be funded or subsidized by taxpayer money.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
We passed a resolution in that we stated that if there was going to be an event where alcohol was served, and there was going to be more than 500 people there, you had to have so many officers.
Right.
There's going to be more than 1,000 people there, there's going to have to be that, we had to escalate the amount of officers for how many people were going to be there. That's something that we passed that we wanted to have happen. Now, when we as a city require that, are they, no, they're not volunteers then, we're requiring that for that event?
Bingo.
I'm just wondering.
So up until this point, if there was an event that involved more than 75 people and served alcohol, they were required to hire an officer. Those officers were obtained through the extra jobs program, it wasn't typically something that they were on duty, they were off-duty status, and as the chief had highlighted here earlier, they weren't covered from a liability and disability standpoint. There have been instances where there was a request for off-duty employment, the police department will put out who's interested in working whatever event, and there was not a sufficient number of officers sign up, so that the city had to determine whether or not there's a safety concern, in which case we required the officers to work, and they were required to work at overtime rates because they'd already worked their normal shifts.
So if a private function is happening, and they're required to have X number of police officers or security, and Friendswood can't fund it because we don't have enough off-duty interested, or enough officers interested in off-duty, couldn't they go someplace else and get the officers, to the sheriff's department or something? I mean.
Whatever, you know, we don't, it doesn't matter to us how many special events, it can be one, or there can be 100. All, we're looking to go ahead and determine this evening, if there is an event, big or small, at a city facility, does the council expect that the police department is going to provide off-duty or officers that aren't assigned to a shift to go ahead and cover the events? If the answer to that question is yes, so let's say that, you know, we had the craft fair, everybody see the craft fair? They were supposed to get an officer or two, I can't remember exactly what the requirement was, there was no officer that was there for the craft fair this weekend. We monitored what went on, we made a determination that, you know, whoever the sponsor was, you know, that we weren't going to have a discussion during the event, but there would be a discussion afterwards. But if the council has an expectation that we're going to cover events in city facilities with officers that are not on the duty schedule, then that's really not an extra job. That is where we're requiring them to work, you know, it's a Fair Labor Standards Act issue, and they have to be on the clock.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So what are other municipalities doing, and how much would it cost an event holder, for example, to provide liability insurance for the officers that they're required to have on duty? Do we know?
It varies from city to city. I know that the police department have looked at a number of other agencies and how they operate in this regard. The most cost-effective was what the chief had proposed, and that is require our officers to secure their own individual liability and disability insurance at the rate of about 28 to 30 bucks a month.
Well, that's fine, but you're asking them to provide, to pull money out of their pocket to go and serve somebody else's interest at an event.
If they want to work that off-duty rate. My suggestion from a staff's perspective, regardless of how we move forward, that those event sponsors pay the full freight of that.
Well, that, okay, so that was what my question was.
Correct.
So do we, do we require the event holder to pay the additional $28 per officer, or who pays for that?
So the officer would pay for it, the event holder would provide liability insurance just in case anybody else gets hurt there, but just for the sake of the well-being of our officer, we would request that they have their own. In the insurance game, there's always an issue.
My point was, is, would it be, do we have an example, or is it out of the realm of possibility to ask the event holder to provide that insurance for that off-duty officer working the event?
I think they were, in the case where, I mean, like Webster goes to an insurer that is going to say, okay, for over and above, $7 over and above your rate, we will cover these guys, so now you pass that rate, you're charging the event holder $42 an hour for these guys, and 35 of it is going to the officer, and 7 is going to the, to the insurance holder.
Correct. For the events that, you know, are not at a city facility, and where there's no expectation that the job's going to be filled or is not. So let's go ahead and use Music Fest as an example. The Music Fest is really the model. It was a large event, took up, you know, probably, what, eight or 10 hours of, you know, per officer, and we had, I think, 22 officers that were assigned to that event, and the cost of security for that event was about $12,000. And Friends of Downtown would bill for the $12,000 that it costs for the security, and they paid it, 100%. So, what we're, you know, again, looking to get consensus on is if there's an event at a city facility, big or small, is there an expectation that a Friendswood police officer is going to be there to provide security and to represent, you know, the city's interests? Not necessarily the sponsor, but the city's interests.
Now, liability was not an issue for your example, right? Because you assigned those officers that duty.
That's right.
These guys weren't working as.
Correct.
They were on the watch bill.
Correct.
And they were, they were working that day.
And if they were injured at that event?
They were covered.
Covered.
So would it be easier for all events at city sponsors to just contract with the police, they have to pay the police for the, for the?
Can you, can you give me the next slide?
I know.
Here's what previous councils had, have approved as city-sponsored events, and these have been funded, these have been provided for.
By the city.
In the PD's overtime account.
Oh, okay.
So, you take a look, you know, the traffic control for Fall Hall, the homecoming parade, youth sports parade, Christmas parade, Halloween in the park, and then what was at Fig Fest, the car show, you know, all those have been previously discussed by previous, by previous councils, and those were, are the city-sponsored events. So I guess if everybody's good with those, you know, then we're fine. So, next slide.
But you're asking about two things, right? So you. Two separate issues. Yeah, so you're asking about, no, I, so I think the delineation is clear.
Right.
If it is a city-sponsored event, then the officers that are working the event are actually on duty for the city, and they're covered by.
That's correct.
Workers' comp and TML.
That's correct.
If it is the, if it is the.
Music Fest.
Music Fest, that's not a city-sponsored event, who pays for the cost of the, who pays the insurance for the officer in the event that he gets hurt, workman, workers' comp?
Well, they're on the clock.
So currently, right now, how is that being handled? The city's paying that, right?
Correct, and they're being billed.
Under the assumption that TML was going to handle it, right?
But because they're on the clock.
But now we know.
Because they're on the clock, they're covered.
They would have been covered.
So in Texas Music Fest example, those were on-duty officers that were asked to work by the police department, so that we were covered.
Okay, so bad example, okay, so the guys work in traffic control outside of the football games, right, home football games.
That's going to be, that's going to be a problem that we're going to have to.
That's the scenario that happened in Dickinson.
That's the scenario that happened in Dickinson, and that's a scenario that we're going to have to discuss.
Right, so the question is, is, who pays the workers' comp? Or are you asking that the city sponsor these events?
I'm not asking for the city to sponsor any event, over and above what you have right here, if you hit the next slide, these are two that we do that no council has gone ahead and approved.
Right.
And they're being paid for out of PD overtime budget. We can cover that, we're not looking for any money, but what was there on the previous slide?
Sponsored.
Those, and then these two, next.
Okay.
These are the city-sponsored events.
May I, I'd like to just ask a simple question. You mentioned earlier that there's a management company that you could contract with that would cover y'all's workman compensation for those particular events that are not city required, or city requested. How would that work? Are they a management group that like work with Webster, work with Clear Lake, work with Friendswood, they're already established vendor?
Well, they're an established vendor, but again, you know, what they're not going to be able to do is be able to, you know, order anybody to work. So what I'm looking to do is to make a, you know, is to get a determination that if there is a city event, or if there is an event at a city facility, big or small, is there a council expectation? I know what the city manager's expectation is because we discussed it already, but is there a council expectation that we're going to provide officers for each of those events?
I think we've already made it our expectation when we passed the resolution, saying if you're having this kind of event on city property, and you're going to have to have one person, one police officer for every 100, or whatever our established rule is, we've already made that assumption, haven't we?
But we can.
Correct.
We could have PD establish this fund where these people that contract for, let's say, they hire an officer to stand outside of the church on Sunday to direct the traffic. Well.
Corey's at Texan Bank every day.
They pay, they pay that, into that fund for these guys, a portion of that money goes to this, no, Bill's shaking his head, no.
Can I?
Come up here, Bill. Got the answer man back there.
I'm also a little bit leery about this, because we can all of a sudden force more cost on these types of events like crafts in the park, and like the Texas Music Fest, that they can't afford it, then these events can't be put on. So there's got to be a fine line here where we don't rush people out of here and say, well, if you can't afford it, don't come. I mean, we got to make a pretty good decision on this, because we could make it where there's nobody can afford to do an event in Friendswood.
Can I ask a question? Many times when you go to work for a company, you have life insurance, you have health insurance, and so forth, and it stays with that company. If you leave that company, you lose all that coverage. You also have the opportunity to go out and buy these things for yourself.
Correct.
And what I am understanding here is that our officers certainly have a certain amount of coverage as long as they're on a city-sponsored job. When they do something that isn't city-sponsored, then they're not covered.
Correct.
If we employ this fund that you're talking about, would we be enabling those officers to, in a manner of speaking, have their own insurance to complement the insurance that we have through the city? Is that how this would work?
They have that opportunity now, right through the city. We have plans that allow them to buy liability coverage and things, and injury coverage.
Because if I'm working extra jobs, and I find out now that I'm not going to be covered, I think that'd be the smart thing to do.
Yeah, that's what we're going to require them to do. We're not going to leave it optional for them, we can do that by policy. But your point is exactly, you know, the dilemma, you know, who pays? So the real question is that if we have an expectation that an officer is going to be there, then it's really not a volunteer, it's really not.
We're requiring it.
We're requiring it. And if we're requiring it, then it's an overtime issue. And if we're requiring it, then it's an overtime issue.
And Bob, don't we have situations where you get enough volunteers and other situations where you don't? And you've got to assign officers to supplement? Do you have that, where you have some working?
Typically, what winds up happening, if we have an event and we can't go ahead and fill it with, you know, the number of volunteers, then we order them all to work and that they're paid at the overtime rate.
But if they're volunteering, we still have this problem of they're not covered. Unless they have their own insurance.
Right, and they're going to have their own insurance. The real question, okay, so let's.
Who's going to pay?
Let's, you know, we had a fun run a couple of months, a couple of months ago, a month ago, and they wanted seven officers for the event. It involved going ahead and closing a roadway, you know, obstructing, you know, the thoroughfare so that the fun run could be, you know, done. They wanted seven officers for the event, and we only had one sign up.
Okay, so let me ask another quick question. To, to, is there a retainer fee or anything to hold this insurance company that's willing to insure officers, workers' comp for $28 an event? Do we have to have a retainer, or can we just put it in the fee structure that says the event holder has to pay $28 plus the cost of the officer?
It's a 28 a month.
It's like a month?
Yeah.
So I mean, it's not that much, right?
Right, but my, that's right, so.
My point is I want the event holder to pay for it, one way or another, than the city to have to.
Well, the event holder, the problem that you've got is we have the flapjack run. Okay, we have the flapjack run.
It's only once a year.
Well, it's once a year, but we got the flapjack run. Seven officers have to, you know, have been tasked to go ahead and support that event. That's a city-sponsored event. Seven officers have signed up, and if we didn't have seven officers, then I'd order, you know, whatever the number was, the delta, to go ahead and work, and we'd have seven officers covering that event. And then, you know, the example with Texas Music Fest is we determined that we needed 22 to secure the park and the adjacent areas around the park. So we didn't get any complaints from the neighbors. In the event that we had a problem, we had, you know, people that could go ahead and react to the problem. And then we had officers that were stationed, you know, throughout the park, at the entrance ways, and at various locations. And in that particular case, you know, the expectation was that we would go ahead and provide the officers. The officers were ordered to work, and that was a very expensive endeavor.
So let me, let me, let me summarize. We have three cases. We have a city-sponsored event on a city piece of property, the officer's covered.
Correct.
We have an event that's on city property, it's not run by the city, but it's on city property, and, and we require them to have an officer, they're covered. Correct?
No.
Why are they not? You just said that you would order them to.
They're not on the clock. If they're on the clock, they're covered.
So if we ordered them to work, they would be covered. If we did not order them to work, the current situation, they're not covered. But we're fixing that. Staff is going to be, any officer that's going to work an extra job is going to be required to maintain their own workers' comp and liability insurance. But we're, tho- those costs are being passed along to the event holder. So if John Scott has a party at his house and he has two off-duty officers, you're going to have to pay that off-duty rate, and that officer's already covering.
And that's the third category. The third category is it's not a city event and it's not on city property.
Correct.
It's a Texan bank or whatever.
Correct.
And what we're saying is in that case, they're not covered, and there has to be a mechanism to cover them.
Correct, and we're, we're setting that mechanism in place, so that won't be an issue moving forward. As of today, they don't have coverage, but they're going to be required to have coverage if they're going to work extra jobs, and those costs will be passed along to the event holder. The only concern we have and direction we need from council is if they're not able to get the required prerequisite number of officers, is council okay with us requiring the officers to work and passing those costs on to those event holders? So, so that we don't have a situation where we tell XYZ event, you can't have it.
That is.
I do believe we've already done that by resolution. If we require it, then we're ordering it.
We have, but just, I just want y'all to keep in mind when you had, if we had shut down the craft show this past weekend, and I didn't want there to be a line of individuals up here complaining to council.
How much would it be if we covered every officer? How many officers do we have?
Sixty.
Times 28 a month? Can you maybe do the math real fast on these engineers that are on the board? 28 times 60?
60 times 30.
Okay, 60 times 30.
We wouldn't do it simply because of the, of using taxpayer funds to provide coverage during a private event.
We're kind of doing it already when we don't have enough officers and we make them work. Not on a private, not on a private party, but. But we can still have them reimburse us. I mean, I'm not saying not charge, not charge them.
I think, yes, and I, and I get, and I think I understand the direction. In short, council wants our individuals to be covered appropriately, and that the event holders cover the full freight of those costs.
Just like Music Fest pays that, they pay all the rest, but then we don't have that issue.
Correct.
Hey, chief, just one quick question, it's kind of not to do with this, but you mentioned 60 officers. I know like 18 months ago, we were at 55, and I think we were looking for five more. So are we about staff right now?
Oh, yeah, we, we're doing real well.
Okay, good.
You know, the hiring environment is.
Improving?
No.
Tough, yeah.
It's tough. But we've been able, you know, to get a mix of experienced officers and new grads from the academy. So we've got an officer graduating who's already on the payroll. I think he graduates the end of the week. We're hiring another officer out of that class. We've got one that's been working in the jail for a couple of years, Friendswood kid, and he's going to go to the academy in January. So we're going to be in the constant hiring mode, but the money that we put into salaries has definitely helped, and we're staying ahead of the power curve right now. We're not behind it.
Good, good.
Thanks, chief, appreciate it.
Well, you know, like I said, we're not looking for any money, just guidance.
Well, you got it.
Sometimes I'd rather give you money.
It'd be a lot easier if you just asked.
Guidance is hard.
Hey, yeah, so you guys bear with me for a minute, I want to, I want to take care of this little business. And Mary Kay, is it all right if I read our closed executive session verbiage and then read our resolution? Because I know it's going to be, it's going to be mayhem here in a minute. And, and we're going to finish this resolution with these kids, and then we're going to.
Yeah.
We'll eventually end up in the back for our closed executive session. I don't want to read both of these things, and I, and I think I'm.
Yeah, that's fine, you can just, after executive session, let the public know that we will go into executive session after the Klein Elementary.
I'm letting them know right now.
Okay, yes.
We're going to, after this next item, we're going to go into closed executive session. I think you're done, chief.
I needed an alibi.
An alibi?
Yeah, alibi round, I didn't get all my rounds out. Meaning I still have bullets.
No, you're.
Take me to the last slide?
We, she flashed it up there for us for, for a quick, I got it on my screen.
Keep, keep, okay, so that chick, go to that last slide.
There you go. Quick. All right. Okay, closed executive session. Any, any communications from the public regarding our executive session topics? And so, item B, council may convene into executive session in accordance with the Texas Government Code pursuant to section 551.071, consultation with attorney to consult with its attorney about pending litigation caused number 18-CV-0108, Joseph Testado versus City of Friendswood in the 122nd Judicial District Court of Galveston County, Texas, with possible discussion and action related thereto in open session. That's what we're going to do after we do this next thing, which is, let me read the resolution, and we can do our motion, and then the discussion part of this resolution is going to be this chaos that's going to ensue. And after these kids get done with their script and, and they take their vote, we'll, we'll, I'll call a quick vote, and we'll official, make it official. All right with everybody? This, uh. Roberts rules is okay? Okay, resolution number R 2019-35, a resolution of the City of Friendswood, Texas, declaring December 3, 2019, as Klein Elementary School Day in the City of Friendswood, Texas. I get a motion?
I make the motion?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, okay. Our discussion phase, let the chaos begin. Well, we knew there was going to be chaos, and as predicted. For those of you that don't know me, I am the real mayor of Friendswood, Texas. My name is Mike, Mike Foreman. I'm about to be, Kennedy is about to take my position here. But we've been doing this now for a little over a year. This is the fifth time we've actually done it. And I always say that this is the most fun that we have in city council all year. We probably wish we had 12 elementary schools in Friendswood so we could do one every month. But maybe I'm, I would wish I didn't have that, maybe. But anyway, Superintendent Thad Roar, before I forget, thank you for being here. You are so supportive of all this, and we appreciate you at the helm at FISD for sure. Reason that we decided to do this last year when we started was that, you know, this gave an opportunity for second graders to come in, see a little bit how, how government works, let them know, you know, where City Hall is. You know, sort of the, the importance of giving back to the community because some of you don't know that all of the council members here in Friendswood, we do not get paid. We're all volunteers. So sometimes we take a little bit of abuse from citizens, we get those angry phone calls, and we do it out of the goodness of our hearts. Actually, we do it because we want to give back to this community, and so it is a great community to live in, and we're just trying to sit up here and make good decisions for the community. It also fosters leadership development for these kids, you know, because these, believe it or not, these are future leaders of this city. So take a look at these guys and gals, and, you know, these are our future leaders. And it also, I'm going to get to you in a second, Jack. It also is, you know, helps to support our school districts' character education program. You know, and we have, as you know, we have two great school districts here in Friendswood. Klein Elementary happens to be in the Friendswood ISD, but in February, we're going to have students from Wedgewood, no, not in February, in March, I misspoke. In March, we're going to have students from Wedgewood, second graders from Wedgewood Elementary come in, as they did last year. So without further ado, I want to go around and, oh, thank you, Trish. Before this totally gets out of, out of hand, after we go through all this and these kids say what they're going to say, we will do individual pictures and we'll do a group picture. So let me start over here with the best-looking city manager we've ever had. This is Bryn Hanks, she's our city manager, and her teacher is Brittany Jumper. Brittany, where are you? Thanks for being here. Who's that little? Lily, Lily's not in second grade yet, is she? No, not quite, okay. Next to Bryn is Vincent Ford, our city attorney. Vincent's teacher is Brittany Boken? All right. Now, you know, we don't usually have eight council members, I didn't point this out. We, we have six council members and a mayor, but because Klein Elementary this year, I think it's a sort of a, an oddity, right? You have 12 second-grade classes this year, so we thought, well, you know, we can suspend our rules a little bit. We can have a couple of extra council members in, in this meeting tonight. So that's why you're seeing 12 people up here around the dais. So our next person is Brielle De La Fuentes, council position one, and your teacher is Kathy Ramsey. Thanks for being here, Kathy. Council position two, Gavin Stanford, and your teacher is Kaylee Walling? Kaylee. Usually it's the kids' names I have a hard time with teaching. All right, Jack, here we are, Jack Man, Jack Man. We call him Jack Man, don't we? Council position three, his teacher is Rachel Clipstein. Clipstein? Ouch. Man.
Einstein, baby.
Clipstein. And Jack's mother is an astronaut, Nicole. Man, will you stand up, Nicole? We are always so proud of all the astronauts that we have living in Friendswood. Marine fighter pilot, call sign Duke, and thanks for being here. I know, I know you had other places you probably needed to be, but this was more important, of course, so, thank you. And Nicole is going to, about to launch to the International Space Station this summer, so, you know, we'll be excited to have you come back. Thank you, thank you. And your dad's sitting right next to her, too, that's Travis, so.
Hello?
Cool, so. Thanks, Jack Man. Okay, council position four is Emory Hoffman, and your teacher is Kim Temperton. Oh, wow, I pronounced her name right. Okay. And again, the best-looking mayor we've ever had, I'm sure. Kennedy Kreitz is our mayor, your teacher is Elena Meeks. Ms. Meeks, thanks for being here. She got the hardest job.
Don't let him fool you.
Yeah, right. Okay, council position five, Trenton Hustack, and Kayla Ruiz is a teacher from that class.
Kayla Ruiz, I know her.
Council position six, Carter Hunter, Kim McSorley. Council position seven, Abigail Rock, Candace Conley. Going around the corner here. Council position eight, Anna Brunette, and your teacher's name is Jennifer Carter. Thanks for being here. And last but not least, our city secretary is Faith Foreman, and you're from Amy Bellamini's class. Hey, Amy? All right. All right, Madam Mayor, I'll turn it over to you. You're looking at me like. You guys speak into your microphones, and hopefully everybody will be able to hear you.
Woohoo. Hello?
Hello?
Mayor and council, tonight you have before your resolution number R 2019-35, declaring December 3, 2019, Klein Elementary Day in Friendswood, Texas. As you know, Klein Elementary is part of the Friendswood Independent School District and is, and is an exemplary campus and a source of pride for our community. Has our city attorney approved the wording of our resolution?
I have drafted the wording. I have drafted the wording of the resolution, and it is in my envision statement of the City of Friendswood.
Will our city secretary please read the city's vision statement for the record?
The City of Friendswood has been following the statement as envisioned. Together we build our future in a friendly place to live, work, play, learn, and worship.
I will not read the resolution. A resolution, a resolution of the City of Friendswood, Texas, declaring December 3, 2019, as Klein Elementary School Day in the City of Friendswood, Texas. It is now time to take a vote. Do I have a motion to accept the resolution?
I move, I move to accept the resolution.
I second the motion.
Any discussion?
At Klein, we show respect to everyone we meet.
Klein Fest is just one of the many ways our school shows citizenship in our community.
Our school is full of responsible students and staff. Caring for our students, staff, families, and community is what really makes our school stand out.
At Klein, you can trust us to fill your bucket.
At Klein, we have a fun and safe learning environment.
At Klein, our students grow through authentic learning.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hand.
All opposed, please raise your hand.
Motion passes nine to zero. Congratulations, Klein Elementary School, this portion of the meeting.
Good job, Kennedy. That's awesome. Awesome job, okay. Any more photos? How are we going to do these photos? Okay. Make this official, before y'all came in, we read the resolution, we got motion and a second. So I'm going to call for our vote now. So all in favor? Seven, nothing. We don't let the city secretary, city attorney, and city manager vote. But it was great that you guys all raised your hand. But it was great that you guys all raised your hand. Well, let's go down front and pose. After we get done with all the pictures, we're gonna meet y'all out in the foyer. We have, we have a lot of sugar to feed these kids before you take them off our hands. Item eight, special recognition and acknowledgements. Presentation of the Five Star Spirit Award for the third quarter of 2019 to Kim Zrubeck, library reference and adult services coordinator, Friendswood Public Library. Come on down, Kim.
Well, good evening again, mayor and council. As you know, every quarter, we have the great honor of recognizing an employee for some stellar service and to the community and the organization overall. Kim, as you mentioned earlier, a reference librarian, serves spectacularly well and was nominated by a fellow Apollo mission, Mr. Benson back there, for her wonderful service, setting up the Apollo activities, the festivities that took place this past July, and going above and beyond to making sure that we were able to recognize not only what a monumental anniversary that was to Friendswood, but to our country. Kim, thank you as always for going above and beyond, and she is our third-quarter recipient for the Five Star Spirit.
Thanks, Kim.
Sneege. Sorry if you don't mind, I just want to thank the Five Star Committee for this recognition. I do want to accept the award on behalf of all the library staff. It took all of us to host and promote and to clean up and set up and continue to run the library during this event. I do want to thank Harold and Carolyn Benson for their energy in identifying what panels and the community members that would be serving on those panels. It kind of resolved down into a nice community reunion at the end of each one of them. And I want to thank the Splash Town, Splashdown, what is it, Celebration Committee? Sorry. I want to thank the 50th Anniversary of the Apollo Splashdown Committee for the vision to host these events so that we could recognize and remember the community's contributions. So, thank you.
Kim, it's nice of you to mention all of your other library staff, compatriots, but every time I was over there for one of those events, you were there. Every time I turned around, you were there. So, you know, it's right that you get the credit because if it had gone wrong, you were gonna get the blame. So, no, it was all, it was wonderful, great job. Thanks, Matt Riley, again, for all of your work there at the library, and Harold, of course. So, I don't know if we've thanked you enough for all that you did for the Apollo 50th, but thank you. And thank you for going the extra mile to identify an employee for this award. And I don't think we award it every quarter. There are some quarters where the committee meets and they say, nobody worthy.
So, we have had an award every quarter since its inception, to our knowledge, but I may be mistaken.
Okay. All right. So, it's really not that great an award. I mean, if they can't find somebody, they'll give it to John Scott, I guess, if nobody bubbles up.
That's never happened.
That has never happened, never.
Usually, they always find better.
Never will, yes. You're right. All right, sorry, we digress. All right, item nine, communications from the public, any cards? So, do I need to read my diatribe here again? All right. Anybody just didn't have a chance to fill out a card yet that wants to speak? Adam? No card? Thank you, sir, appreciate it. All right, item 10, city managers' report.
Mayor and council, before I get started, some of you have commented on my illustrious tie this evening and how good it looks.
Go Navy!
So, I lost a bet this last Saturday when U of H played the Naval Academy, and despite our showing, I was actually pleasantly surprised that we didn't get wiped out because this is not our year to be a U of H fan, but...
Put up a good fight.
Thank you for loaning me your tie. I've not gotten anything on it this evening, and we'll try to keep it clean for you. Next year, we'll be good. We'll get our quarterback back.
Yeah. So, let's have the game in Annapolis. Let's let Navy have home field advantage next year.
Yes.
Yeah, right.
Real quick...
They did pretty well, I tell you. Had me nervous.
Yes, well, nothing to be nervous about.
I was thinking about, where is my U of H tie?
I have it in my desk drawer so that you wouldn't forget it.
Keep it close.
Yep. Fall hall, we just, you may recall, earlier in November, we held our annual fall hall event to clean up Friendswood. Just real quick, some of the numbers from that event. We had 670 cars go through Centennial Park that Saturday morning. Roughly 80 tons of garbage and waste was hauled off-site. These are things in folks' garage that have been sitting there waiting to be removed that they so generously brought to the Centennial Park for removal. 9,300-plus pounds of electronics were e-recycled. 18 bags of trash picked up along 518. 309 pounds of clothes were donated to Simple Recycling. A little under $1,000 was raised by the garage sale to benefit Keep Friendswood Beautiful and to put dollars back into our parks. Whatever wasn't sold at the garage sale was donated to Goodwill, as well as animal habitat items were donated to Bay Area Wildlife Rehab. So, it was a successful event by any stretch of the imagination. A big thank you to our staff, our volunteers, and the sponsors, Waste Connections, and others that helped make this event possible. As you know, it's getting to be that time of year, and there are a number of events that are about to take place. This Saturday, the chief mentioned it during the workshop earlier, there will be the annual Flapjack Fun Run. There will be a number of road closures that you have on your agenda later on, the consent agenda, approval of that. As it is closing of a roadway, we do require council approval, and just to give you some visibility on that, speaking to what we talked about earlier. KFB's Annual Light Up Friendswood Event. This is our effort to get various businesses throughout the city to put up lights to celebrate the holidays. Decorations must be up by December 9. And folks that want to participate are encouraged to register at santa@friendswood.com. The community will have an opportunity to vote between December 10th and 12th on the most festive lights, and the winners will be announced in multiple categories on the 14th. Our annual Santa in the Park festivities will take place Saturday, December 14th, from 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. This year's theme is "There's No Place Like Home For The Holidays." There will be a variety of rides to include a pretty significant-sized snow hill for kids to do some snow sledding here in Friendswood on that Saturday, the 14th. We'd like to thank Hometown Bank of Friendswood for their generous donation to make this event possible. There will be a tree lighting at the end of the evening, as well as fireworks that will culminate here at the end of the parade that will take place that same evening. That evening, the library will keep their doors open for a longer period of time for folks that want to watch the parade that will take place starting around 5:00 p.m. So they, it is Houston, so it may be hot, so they can see it from the air-conditioned space in the library. Also, during the month of December, the library will host "Come and Take Your Pictures With Santa" on the evening of December 16th from 6:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. We will hold a book sale that'll start the 14th that day and run through the 21st of December, and the library will have ready for patrons wassels and cookies while they shop. So if you're interested in either, please swing by the library. If you're not, please still swing by the library and help support that good cause. There will be, not new this year, I think you've done this in years past, but there's a New Year's event that will take place at the library at 11:45 a.m., not p.m., because we don't want us, we don't want folks to be out and about at midnight. But the library will host their annual New Year's Eve party for families. There'll be dance parties and a ball drop countdown at noon on December 31st. I mentioned earlier this month that the Keep Friendswood Beautiful received a $1,500 grant from HEB in conjunction with Keep Texas Beautiful to install a ferry trail that would be the first of its kind in the greater Houston metro area throughout Stevenson Park, and they will make these little ferry houses out of recycled materials and other things that have been discarded in our region and put in their informational items for kids to do scavenger hunts and learn more about the environment and how they can help keep our parks and the surrounding natural environment in good shape. Lastly, Hurricane Harvey updates, our hazard mitigation grant acquisition. These are the buyout grant that we're working with the Texas Division of Emergency Management on. Site visits and appraisals have been completed for each of the properties on that buyout. We're still waiting on the final reports on them so that one-on-one meetings can take place with property owners. Our applications through the general land office on property acquisition, critical infrastructure, they're both still pending, as well as our Deepwood property. This past week, I've enlisted the help to get all projects off dead center of both our congressmen, Olson in Harris County and Weber in Galveston County, to apply some pressure of FEMA because, as you know, we're going on to close to two and a half years and still don't have closure on a number of projects and initiatives. Earlier this evening, the mayor introduced our new drainage coordinator, our deputy director of our engineering department. Ms. Samantha Heritos is here this evening, as you've already got a chance to meet her. We're grateful for her joining our staff. She mentioned it briefly, but she spent, for 15 years, eight years with the Army Corps of Engineers working on the Clear Creek project, and then spent the complement of those 15 years with two private engineering firms doing hydraulic and hydrologist, hydrologic and hydraulic modeling of drainage projects.
So, you had a plan for introducing her, sorry.
It's okay.
I jumped the gun earlier.
At this point, she's gonna give a 15-minute speech on whatnot. I'm just joking. No, we're excited to have Samantha on staff. In addition to bringing on an individual to oversee our drainage activities in Friendswood and move the drainage bond forward, staff did meet with representatives of Harris County Flood Control District and Woodcombe this past month to get some projects getting started on the Harris County side sooner as opposed to later. We are close with getting a memorandum of understanding started with the Woodcombe property owners to present to council, hopefully in the January or February timeframe. The Flood Control District is interested in helping and partnering with us in that endeavor. And then on the Galveston County side, the Drainage District continues their shelving and inline detention along Clear Creek. We met with leadership, as well as the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem, two weeks ago about extending their current project to complete all of Clear Creek from 528 to 2351, sooner as opposed to later. And that's my report.
Thank you, sir. Okay, moving on to item 12, discussion and possible action. Item A is discussion and possible action regarding disposition of bid number 2019-05, lift station number 23, located at 2101 South Friendswood Drive, reconstruction.
I'll make the motion.
A second.
Motion and second. Just two sentences on...
Sure. Lift station 23 is also referred to as Crazy Horse off of 518, the South Friendswood Drive. It's one of our, it's our second-largest lift station that handles all the southern reaches of Friendswood and is in desperate need of replacement. It's close to 30 years old. You may recall, this is the project that we had funded to replace the wet well, the structure where all the sewage goes to, but not the force main. New TCQ regulations stipulated that because of the size of the force main, we'd have to replace the force main as well, so we asked for just a rehab of the wet well in order to achieve the project goals and objectives. We've subsequently been able to accomplish that. We went out for bids, we got a single bid two weeks ago, but it's within budget to do the project.
Okay, got a motion and second, all in favor. Discussion of possible action regarding disposition of bid number 2019-06, 2019-2020 Street Maintenance Program.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and second. This is for all the $4 million worth of streets.
So, if folks are...
Concrete.
Concrete and some asphalt as well.
And some asphalt.
So, if folks are upset with the construction going on, they're gonna get even more upset in the next few months, but we're gonna try to complete four-plus million dollars' worth of street projects the next few months. As council is aware, these are funds coming out of the street sales tax initiative that was approved a few years back, the 3/8 sales tax that goes towards straight, street maintenance and rehab.
Glad you brought that up because we need to make sure that citizens are aware that all this work is being paid for out of sales tax money, you know, and that that tax sunsets. And I think we gotta put it on the ballot, Mary Kay, next year. We decide if we need to do it in May or November. Anytime next year, we need to have it on the ballot.
It can be either May or November.
So, we do need to make sure that when we're talking to people about this, reminding them that, hey, just remember, this money is that 3/8 of a cent that we are putting towards street maintenance, and it's worthwhile because we're getting a lot of the work done needed to be done, and we need to keep that on our, on our budget, in our budget, so...
Do you put signs up on the, near the streets when you're working on it to let people know it's being paid for by the sales tax?
Not construction signs. After the streets completed, we put up these little blue signs, informational signs that say it was paid for with the 3/8 cent sales tax. We can talk about putting up some temporary construction signs up as well, I like that. Yes, we can do...
Mo, I'm looking at the bid sheet and everything, and I know that this is guided by the traffic study that we had done, right? The traffic maintenance...
The assessment plan of our street condition, yes, sir.
In the bid sheet itself, we have a total of $8.422 million worth of work that we have come up with. We're scheduling $4 million cap...
Correct.
...for 2019, but when I look at that bid, I don't really can tell. It's very detailed what they're wanting to do, the line strip and everything, but I don't know where that work is. And I was just wondering, I don't want any detail, just a summary of those higher priorities. I know it's in the study, but I don't want to try to go find the study, just a summary of those that are highest priority maintenance. So, if people ask me, what roads are y'all gonna work on? What, you know, y'all are fixing to spend $4 million? Well, in the bid sheet, I can't see what roads we're working on. If I could just say, just, hey, we're gonna be working on this this year, just a quick summary, and that's where that, that maintenance dollars are going, that would really help me.
Yes, sir, and we can do that, and Hill can answer, and Renee can answer that question.
And I know it's more than 43,000 square feet of concrete because I can look at the bid and see that there's more than that.
There is, definitely, and since you mentioned...
But that was, that was in our agenda sheet, that we were doing 43,000 square feet. And I know, just looking at the bid, we're doing more.
Since you mentioned it, I did want to point out that in some of those items, the bid prices came in a little better than what we expected, and that happened with the concrete. So, we expect to be doing some more concrete work than what's...
Yeah, if I could just have a little summary of what y'all's priorities are, where we're going with it, and then when people come in and say, hey, what are y'all, or, you know, what are y'all doing? I can say, well, hey, this is what we're doing. This is kind of where the priorities are.
Yeah. For the most part, it's guided by the study that you mentioned previously. One of the things that we'll do is to make sure the public is informed, is get, get out a map and show everybody where this is gonna be happening.
That's super. That's all I ask. And hey, I applaud y'all. This is really exciting for everybody in Friendswood. Everybody that's gotten their blacktop roads, they are like, woo-hoo! You know, so I know that the people are seeing it. And it's really important.
And we're gonna do a press release with those streets listed. Do y'all have those streets with you this evening?
Not with me, no.
Okay. Well, we'll do a press release and we'll put that information out.
Right.
And it still is on the website, the priority is based upon that pavement assessment that was done in 2017. I just don't know how far that goes off that study, that $4 million, but we'll, we'll get the succinct list up.
We're excited that Angel Brothers had the winning bid, and we like them, they've done good work for us.
Correct.
Good. Thanks, guys. Renee, I saw that great fence you guys put up over there where you had to tear it down on, in my neighborhood, to fix that water main. I didn't expect it.
President, he was a patient with us, and thanks for everybody, for everybody's patience and their... And we were just trying to do what we could to make sure we get back in time for the holidays and stuff. Just trying to do our best, our team pulled together for that.
I drove down there today, it looked good.
And then on the road, it's Hill and our departments have been working together on this whole process and working together and identifying the areas. And there is other roadways also within this package where our staff is, continues doing maintenance work, so it's also an effort to knock those out so that our staff isn't having to do those maintenance items over and over.
Good.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys. Okay, C, item C.
Yeah, we have a motion.
Let's vote on it then. All in favor? Thank you. Keep me honest. Trying to, yeah, trying to get out of here. Okay, item C, discussion and possible action regarding reappointment for the following boards and commissions. I'm gonna read all these. Okay.
Motion to approve. Second. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Reappointing all these people to all these committees. All reappointments. All right, resolutions. We took care of resolution A, resolution B, resolution number 2019-36, a resolution of the City Council of City Friendswood, Texas, Galveston, Harris Counties, casting 102 votes for electing persons, person or persons, to the Galveston County Appraisal District Board of Directors for 2020, 2021.
I move we vote.
We cast all 102 votes to Don Gartman.
I'll second that motion. And just, maybe I can talk about this one. We have, I don't know how many members there are on the appraisal district five, so we had a chance to nominate five members.
Many.
A few months ago, and now basically each city in the taxing, in the county, gets the, so many votes, and we have 102 votes, however they come up with that number, I don't know, but, and we can cast them any way we want. There might be, I don't know, 15 people nominated, we could spread our votes, but Trish, who just made the motion, you worked, you were on the appraisal district.
I still am.
You still are on.
I have one more meeting.
One more meeting.
Rest of this year.
Rest of this year.
And I've served the last two years.
And so you have worked with Don.
Yes, he's been the chairman the past two years of our committee. I think he's, I can speak to him, I know him, he's done a good job, and he's such a good person.
And he was one of the five that we nominated, so this, we're sort of in line with who we, you know, one of the people we nominated, we could have cast our votes for, we could have spread them across the five that we nominated.
How were the five selected? Because I don't remember nominating the five.
We, back in October, we nominated a list of candidates to be considered.
There's 10 listed on our.
Okay, so we nominated 10.
We nominated five, but those other five that are on your list now were nominated by other agencies that have votes as well, and so there are 10 that are eligible to receive your votes this evening if you so choose.
Every taxing entity has a number of votes based on their taxable levy, so that's why we have 102. League City has more, Clear Creek has more, the county has more, the school district has more, but we have 102. Four of the five people already have enough votes, you have to, I think it's 800 or 850 to automatically be seated, and four people have already received enough votes to be seated.
Okay.
So we're just trying to really fill the last position.
And how many are out there for that last position?
I don't know how many votes have not been cast yet, I don't know. We have 102 votes.
The other four, I believe, that we had nominated were appointed, but I'll have to verify that, except for Don is the one that's lacking right now.
All right. Any discussion, any, anybody feel like we ought to spread votes somewhere else? We can do it any way we want, but I like Trish's thoughts, because she's worked with that.
Well, it's just been brought to my attention that Chad Tressler, who is a city council member over in League City, is also wanting the position, but I don't know Chad, I just, he comes under the tongue of good rapport, he's a really good man, but I don't, I don't see any reason why to go against who Trish is going for, because she knows him, has worked with him for years, so I feel comfortable with that nomination.
Everyone who serves on GCAD, they're exemplary people. That's tongue-in-cheek.
I feel good about it.
But they're all good, and I'm sure Mr. Tressler is too, I just don't know him.
All right, all in favor? Okay, we'll cast our votes for Mr. Gartman. Ordinances. Ordinance number T 2019.
The last resolution.
Another resolution? I see it now, thank you. Resolution number T 2019-37, resolution to do basically the same thing in Harris County. We had one person that we're voting for in Harris County, and that was the person that we nominated.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? That was easy. Ordinance number T 2019-41, second and final reading of an ordinance amending section 30-84 and section 30-118 of the Code of Ordinances pertaining to the International Fire Code and Life Safety Code.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Opposed? All right, six to one. Get that, Melinda? You weren't even looking, you got eyes in the back of your head. Oh. Ordinance T 2019-42, second and final reading of an ordinance amending the zoning classification for a tract or parcel containing 43.0673 acres of land, more or less, being a portion of a called 194.21 acre tract, described as tract A, as conveyed to Yellowstone Hill Country Ranching LLC in clerk's file number 2010059686 of the Galveston County deed records, Galveston County, Friendswood, Texas. Along the future Friendswood Lakes Boulevard, as more fully described herein, to change single-family residential to multifamily residential garden home district.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Opposed?
Can I take just a brief moment here, since that's passed and everything? Last month, maybe in frustration, I made a statement wherein I stated that I didn't know what PNZ was looking at. That was inappropriate, it was uncalled for, and I'd like to apologize to them, because that's, I know in your hearts, and by extension to you, Aubrey, and your staff, I know in your hearts that y'all want nothing but the best for Friendswood, and so I just wanted to apologize for you for that statement. I shouldn't have done that, and I just wanted to let y'all know.
Thank you. Ordinance number T 2019-43, second and final reading of an ordinance amending chapter 86, utilities of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Friendswood by amending sections 86-30 through 86-34, amending the water conservation plan.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Seven oh. Ordinance number T 2019-44, second and final reading of an ordinance adopting the 2018 versions of the International Building Code, International Plumbing Code, International Mechanical Code, International Fuel Gas Code, International Energy Conservation Code, and International Residential Code for one and two-family dwellings, including appendices as noted, and adopting the 2017 version of the National Electrical Code, adopting local amendments, and clarifying the establishment of the Construction Board of Adjustment and Appeals.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Opposed? Is that really the second reading for that? I don't remember saying all that last month, but I'm just saying what's just right down here for me. Ordinance number T 2019-46, first and final reading of an ordinance adopting budget amendment one to the original general budget of the city of fiscal year, the city for fiscal year 2019, 2020. Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Ordinance number T 2019-47, first and, first reading of an ordinance amending chapter 82, traffic and vehicles, by regulating hours of movement of oversized vehicles on certain streets.
I'll make the motion.
Motion and a second. This is --
So there is a presentation prepared, if council would like to hear it, by Deputy Chief Rogers, but he's fine if y'all don't want to hear it either.
I think they were good, chief. Yes. They were definitely good.
Yeah, we're good, we're good, we don't want that.
I said, I said specifically Deputy Chief Rogers.
If I may, I think.
Lashing in.
Excuse me, I hate to do this, but to get this on the record, so that people, people do see the rationale behind it, I would like to have the deputy chief give a brief presentation on this.
So, you know, there was some interest, I guess, last, you know, council meeting about doing some regulation for these heavy and wide loads that have been frequently kind of coming through the city here. So we looked at a couple of different options that, you know, we could, how we could regulate those, but I think it's important to point out that, you know, transportation code regulates that vehicular size and weight on those farm-to-market roads, 518, 20 through 51, and 528, you know, for the City of Friendswood stuff. We have seen the increase of them, and there is some provisions in the transportation code that allow us to, you know, send in a request for certain hours. That doesn't have much teeth, so when they're out there, they can or follow that, or maybe they, they forget, and there's not much, there's not much enforcement on it, so there's some, there's some other options for us there. That's one of them, submit the permit restriction request to text DOT, doesn't have much teeth. We reviewed the current ordinances from other jurisdictions, and, you know, we, that's what we've done here, is proposed a draft to council that actually regulates some of them. Or the third one, which, you know, y'all have kind of indicated at the last one, you know, that we wanted to do some type of change, some type of regulation on these vehicles, but we could do nothing as well. So most of the ordinances that we looked at had these type of restrictions in it, which regulates the peak traffic curfew, so they're not coming through, they're in the middle of town at the worst possible time. And then the prior notification to law enforcement, so we kind of have a heads-up when it's going to happen, right? Instead of just showing up and it's 5 o'clock or 8:30 in the morning, you know, on a, on a Monday morning. And then the maximum height restriction on loads, so that's what you'll see, that's what you'll see in the ordinance. Basically, Monday through Friday would be the curfew, they could go on the weekends whenever, but 6 to 9 AM, 6 AM to 9 AM in the mornings, and then 3 PM to 7 PM would be times that would be restricted, Monday through Friday during those times. And the 14-feet restriction on the, on the height of them, is, which is consistent with text DOT now. That's it.
Thanks, chief. Good job. Councilmember Rocky, you're the one that started this whole thing, when you, when you called the chief and said, hey, I can't get home, the traffic's too bad.
I just got stuck for an hour, not moving one inch, and I, I just called the chief to find out what was going on, and he took action, and I was very proud of it.
He's a man of action, yeah, they all are. All right, all in favor? Okay, item 15, communication from mayor and council members, I'll go first. Happy birthday, Councilmember Brufon, birthday boy.
Christmas Day.
Christmas Day. How about that?
I'll be 32.
Your IQ might be up to 32. I'll say, I'll say Merry Christmas to everybody, we won't see, we won't meet again until after the New Year's, Merry Christmas. Santa will be in the park December 14th, so come on out, see Santa, ride down the sled hill, watch the fireworks. And our next meeting will be January 6th, because Councilmember Scott wants to watch the football game on January 13th, the title game, the national championship game, so we're going to meet on January 6th.
I will predict Alabama won't be in it this year, though. But neither will U of H.
Okay.
More names. I don't have anything.
Brent?
All I want to say, I think you, mayor, started the kids program with coming into the council meetings like we did tonight, and it's a real fun experience, and I'd like to hope that we continue to do that for many years to come. After all of us aren't here, I think it's a real fun change-up, and thanks for doing that.
Yeah, it's been fun, and I know, I think we all enjoy it, and like I said, you know, we could do it every month, and we'd have a lot more fun at council meetings, probably, but.
Well, you can only guarantee 10 more years.
After that, up to the next mayor, yeah, one of these kids will probably be taking the lead.
Yeah. I just.
Four years, so it will be like one of those kids.
Will be, yes.
I just want to mention that the Texas General Land Office is hosting a Houston public hearing for the state action plan to how to distribute $4.297 million in community development block grant mitigation funds, and that is going to be held, and they want public input from everybody. That's going to be held in the Houston area at the Texas Southern University EDU auditorium. The address is 3100 Cleburne Street, Houston, Texas 77004. And Mo, if you would, please let the Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District know about that event.
That's a billion.
Did I, what did I say?
You said million.
Oh, $4.297 billion, I'm sorry. And that's that 32 coming in, but I also just want to wish everybody a Merry Merry Christmas. It's always a Merry Merry Christmas for me, because it is also my birthday, so, and it's always the best time to have the birthday, because my whole family shows up at my birthday, so it's great.
Trish, you got anything?
No, just a happy holidays to everyone, and I think the city's going in a great direction, Mo, and thanks, Aubrey, too, for bringing that comprehensive plan discussion to the agenda tonight, appreciate it.
And then she said a bunch of stuff, yeah.
My turn?
Sally.
I also, I too would like to wish everyone Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays. Tomorrow night is the, we actually don't know how many years to be, Steve, but over 30 years, the annual tree lighting at the Friendswood Brown, Frank Brown, Frank, ugh, Frank J. Brown Museum, and then the following night, Wednesday night, the Friendswood Schools Museum is also going to have a Christmas tree lighting, and these events kind of kick off all the rest that's going to happen with the Chamber and the city, and there's just, if you can't find something to do in December in Friendswood, that is your fault. We celebrate these holidays a lot. Anyway, thank you very much.
All.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?